Welcome, everyone, to the March 10th, 2020 conference agenda. We have some wonderful people we're going to honor tonight and some organizations. So without further ado, I'm going to ask Mr. I'm, to please do a...
Freeholders out there. Bartlett.
Here.
Best.
Here.
Daffy.
Here.
James. Deputy Director of the Board.
Here.
Director Wazara.
Here.
And I will hand this over to our Administrator.
Thank you, Director. First on our conference agenda this evening is a presentation of proclamation celebrating Girl Scout Week. And the importance of girls' leadership development of the Girl Scouts of Northern New Jersey. We have Betty Garger. Did I say that correct, Betty? Come on forward. She's the CEO of Girl Scouts of Northern New Jersey. So why don't we ask the Girl Scouts to come up with her as well? Betty, you can go to the podium. Okay, and freeholder TJ Best is going to read the proclamation.
Sure.
You wrote the proclamation.
Sure, we'll read the proclamation. Again, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. As we know, this month we're celebrating Women's History Month and Women's Achievement Month, and we're also celebrating Girl Scout Week. So I'm really excited to have our Girl Scout troop here from Wayne, New Jersey, along with Betty, who has been doing a dynamic job, not just in Wayne, but in the entire northern region of the state of New Jersey. So I have a proclamation here. I'm going to read it, but then I'll ask Betty and our students to see if you guys want to share any words about your experience in Girl Scouts. Whereas, Girl Scouts is recognized as a national leader in providing the best leadership development experience in the world for girls. And Girl Scouts brings time-tested methods and research-backed programs that speak to the strength of girl leadership development backed by more than 100 years of experience and expertise in the field. And in Girl Scouts, girls develop the leadership potential through activities that enable them to discover the value, skills, and the world around them, connecting with others in multicultural environments. And, Girl Scouts is continuing a legacy of creating gender-balanced leadership in the United States and in the world in the second century of service to girls by providing girls with the tools to become leaders dedicated to making the country and the world a better place. And whereas, Girl Scouts offers hands-on, girl-led, girl-centered learning and STEM the outdoors and entrepreneurship and abundant opportunities to develop invaluable life skills, helping all girls take the lead early and often. And whereas, only Girl Scouts offers girls a one-of-a-kind opportunity to become a Gold Award Girl Scout by engaging in leadership at the highest levels while addressing an issue that they feel passionately about. And whereas, the Girl Scouts Gold Award is the highest honor a Girl Scout can earn, acknowledges each recipient power and dedication to not only veteran herself, but to making the world a better place for others. And whereas, Girl Scouts was founded in 1912 by Juliette Gordon Low, whose life mission was to build girls of courage, confidence, and character, and through her leadership continues to have an extraordinary influence on the lives of millions of girls across the country. And whereas, today, more than 59 million American women are Girl Scouts alumni, and 2.5 million girls and adult volunteers are active members, and right here at the State County, New Jersey, there are over 6,000 Girl Scouts and adult members, including my daughter, Riley Marie Best. Now, therefore, great proclaim by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that hereby applause the Girl Scouts movement and Girl Scouts of Northern New Jersey and designates this week of March 9th through 14th, 2020, as Girl Scout Week in celebration and recognition of the girl-led, all-girls-based, where girls thrive and develop their talents and leadership skills. Let's hear it for the Girl Scouts.
All right. Thank you, Freeholder Best. Thank you, everyone. Thank you to all the freeholders. We are honored to be here and in celebration of Girl Scout Week. We will be 108 years old in two days, and don't we look really great for 108 years old? I want to thank Freeholder Best especially. He is very active in the Girl Scouts. He serves on the Girl Scouts of Northern New Jersey's Board Development Committee, and he helps us find great, dynamic board members to help lead our great organization. It is through Girl Scouts like these standing in front of you from Wayne, who we really do make the world a better place. They work really hard on projects that they care about, and I'm not sure if they're ready to talk, but if anyone wants to come up and just talk about Girl Scouts or their favorite thing. All right, come on up. Tabitha, right?
Hi. I've been a Girl Scout since I was in second grade, I believe, and it's probably one of the best programs I've ever been in in my life. It helps you with team building and making new friends and all kinds of fun activities. I love it. Great for the nation. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nicole. I've been a Girl Scout since I was in kindergarten. I really like being a Girl Scout because it really lets you follow your passion, and you can really do whatever you want. You can really volunteer and help out in your community, and you can follow issues that you're really passionate about, like, and you can do things like your bronze award or your silver award or like decided to gold award, and I'm working on my silver award right now, and I'm really excited to complete it, and yeah.
My name is Molly, and I've been a Girl Scout since I was in kindergarten. I love Girl Scouts because it has given me an opportunity to make friends, and I went to Girl Scout camp during the summer, and I made a lot of friends there, and it's just very important to me, and I love Girl Scouts, and...
All right, well, I don't really need to say anything else, as you heard it from our girls themselves. It is a program where they can be themselves, they can try new things, they can fail, they can try them again, and they can really learn from their mistakes. And unfortunately, in this society, they don't really get that chance to do so. When you're in school, you get graded for everything that you do. Girl Scouts, there's no grade. So we're happy to have them here. We're happy to celebrate Girl Scout Week, and we really appreciate State County's support and the Freeholder Board's support. So thank you.
Everybody hang around after for Girl Scouts.
Director, we go from one great organization to another great organization. State County Board of Chosen Freeholders have declared March as the Red Cross Month. We are very honored to have with us here this evening Nancy Franceschi. Did I say that right, Nancy? Disaster specialist, disaster program specialist. And we also have Carlos Sanchez. Carlos here as well. Carlos, wanted to come forward as well. And Freeholder Bartlett is going to present a proclamation recognizing the month of March as Red Cross Month in the county of Passaic.
Thank you, Bartlett. I recognize the one, and by God, also to join us up here. Quite a dash. First, I get to be joined by a disaster specialist, which I might not should read too much into, since we literally had a dumpster fire here in State County this afternoon. Fortunately, did not turn into a disaster, but it's my privilege to do this many years, and whenever we can, we actually light up the Lambert's Tower on Garrett Mountain in red today in recognition of the American Red Cross because of the remarkable work you all do for those when they're most desperately in need. So it's a privilege to read this into the record. Whereas, more than 139 years ago, the American Red Cross was established as a humanitarian organization guided by seven fundamental principles, including humanity, impartiality, and independence, to provide services to those in need regardless of race, religious, gender, sexual orientation, or citizenship status. And today, the American Red Cross is one of the largest humanitarian organizations in the world and delivers its mission every day to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. And whereas, every year, the American Red Cross responds to an average of more than 62,000 disasters from across the country, from small home fires to devastating massive disasters. Last year's large crises included mudslides in California, wildfires in Colorado and California, destructive hurricanes in Florida and Carolina, and the devastating tycoons in U.S. territories abroad, where thousands of American Red Cross volunteers provided around-the-clock shelter for disaster victims, served millions of meals and snacks with partners, and distributed millions of relief items. And whereas, in New Jersey, the Red Cross has a long history of helping its neighbors in need, the Red Cross New Jersey region assisted with 821 local disasters in the past year alone and helped save lives through its home fire campaign, which launched in October 2014. And since that time, the New Jersey region has worked with community partners to install more than 41,000 smoke alarms. And in our area, the Red Cross handles an average of 7,223 emergency military calls every year and collects an average of 94,708 units of blood from its generous blood donors. And whereas, March is designated as Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank the Red Cross volunteers and donors who give of their time and resources to help members of the community, and the Red Cross depends on these local heroes to deliver help and hope during a disaster. And the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic applauds our heroes here in New Jersey who give of themselves to assist their neighbors when they need a helping hand. And whereas, the American Red Cross shelters, feeds, and provides emotional support to victims of disasters, supplies about 40% of the nation's blood, teaches skills that save lives, and provides international humanitarian aid, and it supports military members and their families. And whereas, this board dedicates the month of March to all who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies, and our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on volunteers and the generosity of the public to perform its mission. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that it does hereby designate March 2020 as American Red Cross Month in the County of Passaic and encourages all its residents to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission.
Thank you, State County Freeholders. Again, my name is Nancy Franceschi, and it's an honor to be here tonight, and thank you all for the support. We keep delivering our mission, and we could not have done, complete this organization without our fabulous volunteers with Carlos and Aunt that go out at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning after to help those in need. So thank you. Thank you, Carlos and Aunt. And again, thank you so much, everybody, for all your support, and don't forget, set up the alarm next month in the city of Patterson. We're installing by the end of the year more than 5,000 smoke alarms in the city of Patterson. Yes, it does.
Why not? I'm going to... Fill the agenda here this evening. I want to introduce our Freeholder Director, Sandy Wazara, who is going to... ...take over for our Women's History Month celebration. No coincidence?
Next year, one of the other Freeholders will. Welcome, everyone. This is a great night for all of us because this is such an important year. First of all, the theme for Women's History Month is "Valiant Women of the Vote," which means that we are honoring women, the suffrage women, who went out there and fought for the right to vote for women everywhere. But we continue with that. We continue to try and get the vote out, because I don't know if you noticed, but in back, and I know this because I was at the bottom house, someone else speak then, back in 1907, they were going to pass the right to vote for women, but there was a contentious race for president that year, and they knew if they gave women the right to vote at that time, that they would vote for a Democrat. So as the story goes, they never gave the right to women then because they didn't want them to go out and vote for a Democrat. But while I was at the bottom house, and we were there on Sunday to celebrate International Women's Day, which has the same type of theme as Women's History Month. So when I was at the bottom house, I don't know if you all know this, bottom house is in Halden, and there was a great strike by the men and women who worked in the cell mills, mostly in Patterson, but everywhere. And I thought about this, and I thought to myself, my grandmother worked in a jute mill, J-U-T-E, on Ellison Street in Patterson at that time, and I can't help but wonder if she wasn't in that group of thousands of people when they went out to strike for the rights of workers everywhere for fair pay, you know, work hours, health benefits, and all that. So I guess I come from a boy line of people who think that, you know what, if we want something done, we all have to go out and fight for it. It doesn't matter if you're a man or a woman. I think what, when we want things done right, we need to go out and we need to fight for those rights. So today, we're going to honor a few people here, and we're going to start with one of our own. And every woman that we're going to honor tonight has something to do with getting the vote out in some way, some shape, or some form. The woman that we're going to bring up now, which we're waiting for, doesn't know she's being honored here. She doesn't know who's here to see her tonight. And it's very special to us to make sure that she, is she coming? We had to keep her busy so she wouldn't come in, because she would have seen everybody and known. Is she coming?
Yeah, she just finished by yourself.
See, she's a fighter. She fights for the things that she wants, but she's really near and dear to all of us, is all our honor is our tonight. And we try to mix it up a little bit and get people from different, you know, areas of work and background and everything so that we can take a look and see that this isn't a fight of just one person. This is a fight of everybody coming together. So without further ado, let's hear it for she comes, our Honor Ray number one. I'm going to ask Freeholder James, places work, husband, if you please.
Oh, it's one for the work. So she really is, she really is my wife, I swear. You know, we joke about it, but I get the abuse, and she yells at me all the time, and if I'm late, she's going to yell at me if I'm early, she goes. These are my kids. Aaron's teddy. So this is March, it's all the whereas, it's so. This is her father, Reverend Lewis, W. Lewis McDowell from Passaic, from Mount Pilgrim, Mount Pilgrim, is here, which... It really is my church. I've been going there now for 16 years, and they call me Rick James. I'm not sure what that means. They know. So anyway, let me get through this. She's affectionately known as Lisa, and we all know that's not her name, name, close enough. And she was born at Passaic to the late Sanelle McDowell and this man, Reverend W. Lewis McDowell, and she was raised at Passaic, and that's great because they're mayors here, sorry, Dr. Laura. She attended Passaic Public School Systems throughout her elementary and high school education, and after completing high school, she attended Passaic County Community College and received her Associate's Degree in Business Administration. She is the, she's the office manager for us here at the Passaic County Board of Chosen Freeholders and the clerk to the board's office. She's worked for the County of Passaic for, through years. She both loves and enjoys her job, and she's, I look forward to her coming in here every day when she's here, all of our staff, but been with her for the entire time I'm here, and that's almost, well, in my 50 years. She is an active member of Mount Pilgrim Missionary Baptist Church of Passaic, and she's a supportive member of all endeavors, functions, and programs that her church sponsors. She currently serves as the co-leader of the Deaconess Ministry, and she is a faithful member of the Wednesday Night Bible Study Class and actively serves and participates in women's ministry. Whereas, Lisa Hill McDowell is a member of the Passaic County Women Empowerment Democratic Organization, or we do a staff member of the Passaic County Leadership Summit, and volunteers during the fall campaigns to help get the vote out operations for the Passaic County Democratic Party. Whereas, she is a daughter, a mother, a sister, an aunt. She is the proud mother of two children, my Tamara and Tina Marhill Jr. She loves her family unconditionally, and there is not a day that goes by that she doesn't carry her mother's spirit with her, always remembering, only what you do for Christ will last, and she does live that. Whereas, she is a unique and most respected colleague, associate, and friend of many persons within the County of Passaic. She has brought honor and prestige not only to herself, but to the county as well and to the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic. We would like to express our gratitude and appreciation to her, and there's some other stuff in there, but I just have to say this. She is a very special person from a very special family. This is her sister, who's also a pastor. I don't know where I would be without her. She keeps things in order, and I'm not joking, I, you know, get a little feisty and she puts it and smacks me down, and so I feel like I'm married to her. I just don't have to give her a lot of money, which is good. But I don't know what we would do without her. She keeps her office together that gets a little bit crazy, and what, Tricia and our staff, Jasmine, Jasmine will tell you, it gets a little crazy. She's a wonderful person to work for, for all the people that I've ever worked in New York. There's been quite a few of them since I've been here, and they all love her and respect her, and her church family's here for a reason. They know her. This is, this is for luck. This is really for luck. So if you all want to come up and, you know, take a picture, I think we're going to have a lot of flowers up here, and I, oh, look at that, you got flowers for me. Anyway, I'm going to, I'm going to let you do this, and I'm going to let Lisa speak, and I think we're all privileged here tonight to have her, the first one that we honor tonight, and having to do this for her. Not touching anybody, but I just hope you're...
I'll come over to you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming out. Thank you. Thank you. Every last one of you. Well, I'm a little late. Whereas, can't expect... My sister always say, you learn anything with time? I'm like, no, I love my job. I love coming here to my family. I love you. My sister, I love you. My two kids, Teddy and Karen. Teddy, thanks for coming up here. I mean, I love you. I wouldn't be where I am without my family and me. I was just saying, I have to call and tell you, I feel bad for me. I love you. Church hubby, thank you for the, this is my church hubby, Gavin, thank you. And to my family, everybody in Mount Pilgrim, I love you guys so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chosen Freeholders, and our honored mayor, Mayor Laura. We've been together all day, or mostly all day together today. Thank you so much for this recognition of my beloved daughter on tonight. She is a good daughter. Simply because a good father and a good mother raised her, and we thank God for it. And after my late demise over 10 years ago, Lisa became the mother of all of us, and I thank God for it, even when we are blind, when we are... When we are eating, everything comes from the dad. So I thank God for her, and I thank God for all of you. I would just like to, I know you're coming up to say a bit, but I'm staying. And that would have been others to come, but when there is a secret, Lisa, you know, they keep it from me. Soon as I know it, I have to tell it. So they kept it from me until probably yesterday, and I thank God for her. God bless you.
you, and me, and so.
She is out there year-round, speaking up for the rights of women, trying, getting out the vote, canvassing, I think she knows probably as much about, uh, running for election or getting people elected than most of us do, and she's a very special person to everyone, she is the wife of Freeholder John Bartlett, but in her own right, she is Dr. Tiyati Joshi, that I would like to ask you to come up, and I would also ask that Freeholder Pat LaPorte come down to present this proclamation.
All right, I'm gonna talk very loud. Uh, first I would express appreciation for the honor of being able to read this, for a phenomenal, a phenomenal person. Whereas the Month of March has been designated as National Women's History Month, and recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional women over the years, Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic, it is fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Dr. Tiyati Joshi, and whereas, Dr. Joshi is a public intellectual in social science research and community connection, and form policymakers, educators, and everyday people about race, religion, and immigration, twenty-first century America, and she serves as a talented full professor of education at Fairly Dixon University, and previously was a visiting assistant professor at the Center for Study of Ethnicity and Race at Columbia University, and lecturer at the American Studies Program at Princeton University. Whereas, Dr. Joshi is a graduate of Emory University, received a Master of Theological Studies, uh, from the Campbell School of Theology at Emory University, studies at the Hebrew University of Jerusalem, and, uh, as a star and graduate fellow, earned her Doctorate in Social Justice Education from the University of Massachusetts, other Indian universities, not even, you know. Dr. Joshi is an author and editor of multiple books, including The Forthcoming White Christian Privilege, The Illusion of Religious Equality in America, Teaching for Diversity in Social Justice, Third Edition, Asian Americans in Dixie, Race and Migration of the South, Investigating Religious Oppressions in Christian Privilege, and New Roots in American Sacred Grand, Religion, Race, and Ethnicity in Indian America, as well as articles in scholarly journals and anthropology, including the Oxford Encyclopedia of Religion in America and the Encyclopedia on University of Education. I'm exhausted, really, I'm amazed, I'm amazed. Whereas in the area of community service, Dr. Joshi serves, uh, on the Board of Trustees of the Drum Quacket Foundation, as a member of the New Jersey Arts Dad Commission, and as co-chair of the Passaic County Complete Count Committee for Census 2020. She served as the founding co-chair and the South Asian American Caucus of the New Jersey Democratic State Committee from 2013 to 2019. She was a delegate at the Democratic National Convention in 2016 for Hillary Rodden, and whereas, Dr. Joshi is an immigrant born in, um, Andabah, what she said.
Andabah, who's right, India.
Who's right, India, I told her, I was saying, who grew up in Altoona, Pennsylvania, and Atlanta, Georgia, and now resides in Wayne, their husband and son. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic, that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Dr. Tiyati Joshi for the significant contribution she has made and the exemplary service she has unselfishly devoted to the county of Passaic and to the community, and be a further proclaimed at this point, extends its sincere best wishes to her, for continuing to succeed in community, amazing, I'm amazed.
Freeholder Lusar, I said, "You're teacher voice," which I serve him, him too, um, I have one of the best jobs in the whole world, and that is being an educator. I tell my students, I've been in school my entire life, I just went from one side of the desk to the other, as a professor. Um, what, what I love more than teaching is using the information that I've learned over the years with communities, and I'm super thankful to all the freeholders for all that you do for the various communities of Passaic County, which allows people like me to be engaged with all different kinds of communities, and because of the things I've studied and the things that are important to me, I think it helps me do that community engagement and community service in a more effective manner. So, um, I really wanna thank the freeholders, I do have a favorite one, of course. But, uh, but, but seriously, I really, really appreciate all they do and the efforts they make to make sure that all communities of Passaic County are included and will be counted for Census 2020.
You also have citation from Senator Nellie Powell from the Assembly for your wonderful achievement.
I'm gonna stand next to the honorations.
Sitting here in Patterson, uh, Dela McCall Fisher, every year, I don't know if you're out there, when it's not to start running for office or January elected, Dela is always there, and the office is on Ellis Street, behind City Hall, behind the campaign headquarters, and Dela is out there all the time, helping people sign up to vote, to register, and do what you can to make sure that we get all those people out to vote. Dela's also, I guess, the first woman in action, basically, right, giving the right-hand woman to the mayor, and you have a great job, no, I'm sure, come on up. So, we are so honored to be able to recognize Dela, everything that she does, and people with me, um, getting out the vote and making sure that will happen.
Good evening, everyone, it's an honor and privilege to read this proclamation, graduation of the honoraries. So, here we go, whereas the Month of March has been designated as National Women's History Month in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional women over the years, Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic, it is fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Dela McCall Fisher, and whereas, Dela McCall Fisher holds Bachelor of Arts degree in religious education from Knight Howard Christian College. She's a mother of three, dash one, charity, and charity, pronounced that right, chara? Chara, and she is also an ordained Christian minister, may I ask you to read, for me to read this for you? The Senator Farland, uh, whereas, Dela McCall Fisher was employed on New Jersey Transit, which she served as a customer service specialist since March 2019, acting as a head somber for transit customers, bus, rail, and light supervisor, supervisory personnel, aren't you glad you're out here? Whereas, prior to New Jersey Transit, Dela McCall Fisher served as Deputy Director of Constituent Relief Relations for Governor Phil Murphy, troubleshooting concerns of constituents throughout the state and working with the state department to solve their problems. She is the founder of a political consulting firm, Fisher and Associates, serving multiple campaigns and transition teams statewide, and whereas, in Patterson, Dela McCall Fisher has deep roots as an entrepreneur, founding and running multiple small businesses with her family, including a childcare center and a restaurant, and more recently, she worked as the Patterson Public Schools from 2013 to 2015, as administrative assistant maintaining school funding for books, providing principals monthly, quarterly, and annual treasury reports. She also worked as a residential specialist supervisor at Youth Consultation Services of YCS for seven years in 2006, since 2013, where she managed childcare, case work, residential staff, established programs to better engage parents in regular communication day groups and treatment conferences. Whereas, Dela McCall Fisher is beneath her most respected colleague, associate, friend of many persons that live in the county of Passaic, and she has brought honor and prestige not only to herself, but to towns of Passaic County as well, and the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic, who like to express his gratitude and appreciation to her. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic, that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Dela McCall Fisher for the significant contributions she has made, and her exemplary service she has unselfishly devoted to the county of Passaic and to the community. Be a further proclaimed at this point, extends its sincere best wishes to her, and to this excellent county.
First, I wanna say to our, uh, Board of Chosen Freeholders, thank you for being considerate with this honor, I am so grateful, when I got the letter, I just started looking at it like, really, me? But, you know, I'm always concerned about getting out the vote, and anybody who knows me, from September to December, I am really like, I'm sorry, to November, I'm really focused about making sure that every eligible voter that has the right to vote gets to the polls, so I'm just honored that I got to work on, I think, everyone up there, all of the freeholders, it's elections, right? And we got you there, we're happy about it, but I am so happy to know that this county really cares about every city that it represents, and that it is a fair missing, and I just appreciate it, and my faith here, it already has you here, right? But I do wanna say to my family, thank you for being so understanding when I'm not home, and I'm always out, and I'm without, throughout the county, and sometimes, a few years ago, I was throughout the state, helping our governor get elected, and I just wanna say thank you, and to our sheriff, I'm so grateful that I got to work on your last campaign, but most of all, remember, if you have a friend or you know someone that is not registered to vote, give them a gift, give them a card on their birthday with a voter registration form inside, that's what I do for all of my family members, it's so important. But I wouldn't be who I am if I didn't have my partner cry, and Marquisha, thank you because we worked so well together, that's like my little sister in this, in this fight we call politics, and I'm just so appreciative to have her in my life, and I just wanted to say to my mom, who's all the way from Connecticut, and you're up here for me, I love you, and thank you for coming, because, I know it was rush hour, but you made it. And my son and my daughter, I'm sorry.
David, come on. All my grandkids, come on.
My next honor, right, now, it's the city of Passaic. Now, we are extra happy that you came here tonight, I wasn't quite sure a little baby of hers was gonna come first, but thank goodness that she's here tonight. Councilwoman Hello, whenever you go to Passaic, it's always here, we do, she's at every single event, she's out there to get people to vote, uh, you know, I almost think that, as Lisa is, versus work-wise, I almost think of that, who you and Hector, because you guys always work so well together, and we are so honored that you came here tonight, so I would ask you to please come up and help, take us in after, well, thank you for all.
Uh, before I start, if I could just recognize the fact, you were talking about Women's History Month, and we talked about a lot of great women in history, if you see that the flashing, uh, video, and you see our Freeholder Director, and we can counsel, you know that women are running our county, so we have a big round of applause. We've seen this country run this county without all the great women or directors and our Freeholder Directors who all work, um, and we thank Councilwoman Paul, and so, whereas the Month of March has been designated as National Women's History Month, and in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional women over the years, Board of Chosen Freeholders of Passaic, it is fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Councilwoman Tanya Mello, and whereas Tanya Mello was born in Dominican Republic, always a rich girl, Indian United States, a senior state with her parents at two rows and a very young age, she attended Passaic Public Schools and graduated from Passaic High School, earned a degree in Business Administration from after years. Whereas Tanya Mello was hired by Indian library in, in Clifton, as a human resources administrator, a job that gave her a real exposure to the issue, may or for use for residents of the nearby city, experiencing, delighted to find ways to get involved, and whereas her passion to serve, inspire, empower others, better themselves, cultivate, uh, she went on to become the Director of Worldwide Education Services in local vocational transport, she worked closely with troubled youth population, as well as low-income, homeless, and welfare population, to achieve their vocational certifications, complete various educational and occupational training programs, and whereas, she ran and was elected to the Board of Education, where she worked to move mountains, to help the children of Passaic, to give the issue of problems that children deal with at a very young age, with prompt, intuitive, educational approach.
I apologize if I'm bailing myself, because April's pregnant and really bad with all kinds of craziness going on. But I want to thank the pre-holders for honoring women this month. For me, again, as a woman, this is, I feel very honored. Because women, for many years, I mean, it's just been 101 years that we actually been the ones of us. I mean, after so much fighting, many women that really put their life on the line and went out there to make sure that today we live like that. And as women, we have to, we have to really honor that. One of the young women that I admire, she actually in the Old Testament, Deborah. Deborah was the only judge who's a woman prophetess in a time when no female were allowed to really see much. And she encouraged Barak, who was a leader, to fight a war against the enemy. So I think as women, we have a lot to offer. You know, we could be kind, could be, because if we look at the meaning of Deborah, Deborah knew to be. I mean, at times you can sting, but we can definitely empower. You know, and it is, as women, we are mothers, we are wives, we are colleagues. And I think that is something that we have to really take a great, great hold on to so we can continue to push forward, encourage our younger generation to go out there and vote. When I first got elected to the Board of Education, I won my four votes, my four votes. But that came with a lot of work, with a lot of work. So we've come a long way. Let's not, things go backwards. We live in a time where things can change if we don't keep pushing forward. And as females, we have to really keep pushing forward so we can encourage our males to do better. And also encourage our kids to be the next generation to pass on that torch so they could be the best generation for us and take care of us. So once again, thank you all. I feel very honored to be here. Like Director Lazaro said, I almost didn't make it, but by the grace of God, I'm here. I also want to thank my family, my husband, my children for being here, my colleagues, Commissioner Sanchez, and also the mayor, my mayor, for being here supporting me tonight. And thank you all again for being here. My pleasure.
Where's the mayor's? The mayor's?
Our next honorary. It's not funny. Susan Butterfield. Just met her, she knew her on trial, so she had. So keeping with the theme of Passaic, Sue was a teacher in Passaic for 24 years, you know? And she became the president of Passaic County Education Associations. But she learned way back in high school in Passaic, which was teaching, the necessity of getting the vote out and working with people and talking to people and explaining to people that maybe they didn't quite understand as president of Passaic County Education Association. And a lot of people might not know this, she does support candidates who obviously support education. We just had a big, oh, deal. Yeah, huge deal. Compromise, yeah. Compromise with, NJDA came to compromise with Senator Sweeney about Chapter 78, which said Sue had to lead the fight out because we know that it's important that we support our education and family. So I'm not gonna say anymore, because I have to give the proclamation and then I'll say everything and it'll get angry. Whereas the month of March has been designated as National Women's History Month in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made by many exceptional women over the years, the Board of Chosen Free Holders of the County of Passaic deems fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize Susan Butterfield. And whereas Susan Butterfield has been advocated for education professionals who serve all age groups in many different school settings as president of Passaic County Education Associations, she understands and respects the need to recognize role models for our youth. Whereas Susan Butterfield has been teaching in Passaic Public Schools, which has given her an opportunity to develop a deep respect for the sacrifices often made by parents and concerned for their disciples that their children must face. Whereas Susan Butterfield has been supporting the mission of divorcees in Passaic County as a member of their Board of Justice, which allows her to express the personal priorities she has developed through her employment and personal experiences. Whereas Susan Butterfield was born in Essex County, New Jersey, and after attending Dickinson College in Carlisle, Pennsylvania, she began teaching at Passaic High School. And whereas Susan Butterfield earned a Master of Arts at Teachers College, Columbia University, and is proud to say that she has over two decades serving students of Passaic County. Whereas Susan Butterfield serves as a Secretary for the Rose Plan Democratic Committee and as a member of the Essex County Democratic Committee. And whereas Susan Butterfield is a unique and most respected colleague, associate and friend of many persons within the county of Passaic, and she has brought honor and prestige not only to herself but to Passaic County as well. And the Board of Chosen Free Holders of the County of Passaic would like to express its gratitude and appreciation to her. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Free Holders of the County of Passaic that if you're white publicly recognizes and applauds Susan Butterfield for the significant contributions she has made and the exemplary service she has unselfishly devoted to the county of Passaic and to the community. And being further proclaimed that this board extends its sincere best wishes to her for continued success in the future. And I would invite you to address us and meet your teachers.
First, I would, you know, the women that are honored tonight, it's really a privilege to be among such an amazing group of people and thank you to the pre-holders for this recognition. I get to represent teachers. Teachers are mostly women in addition to the education support professionals such as secretaries and power professionals and cafeteria aides. And you know that women dominate those jobs. So it's an honor and a privilege to represent women and advocate for their continued success. And when we bargain collectively, we equalize pay. So it's so important to recognize, and I really appreciate that, because without the union, you know, the women would probably be further behind in pay. So in addition to getting out the right to vote and in addition to bargaining collectively, I'm on a trial, I'm on jury duty, on a trial, I'm sitting in the box, and I ran up here from Newark because we are, we're right in the thick of it. So I'm a little discombobulated from jury duty and all these things, but it's such an honor to be here and I'm so grateful and it's just wonderful to see the women of the county and all the things that are being accomplished. So thank you so much.
All of the honorees here, we have all the honorees, come on, if you're still here. Come on.
Lisa, you too.
Lisa.
Congratulations.
You guys are good people. You guys are real good people. They're being led by you.
All right, I think that concludes my portion of the agenda.
Okay, and everyone's invited to go down and eat, or you can stay and listen to our meeting, it's up to you. Not gonna be a tough decision, I think. Okay. We have, we now have the, oh, I'm sorry, we have, all right, review of the agenda, I have one through I nine and N one through N forty, four to N twenty late starters.
Director, yes, we have one late starter, N forty five. Escape, one twenty, one twenty twenty four, train.
Free holders, after.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Leford.
Yes.
Director Lazaro.
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our pre-holders in the county of Passaic, for thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord and Master.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and as your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty, and justice for all.
In a moment of silence, please, for the men and women of God's most servant in the United States of America. And the first person that passed the burden travel for the current emergency.
Free holders, after.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Leford.
Yes.
Director Lazaro.
Yes. A motion to suspend the regular order of business.
Move it. Okay. Free holders, after.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Leford.
Yes.
Director Lazaro.
Yes. A motion to suspend the regular order of business.
Move it. Okay. Free holders, after.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Leford.
Yes.
Director Lazaro.
Yes. A motion to suspend the regular order of business.
Move it. Second. Free holders, after.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Leford.
Yes.
Director Lazaro.
Yes. Is anyone present a desire to hear about the 2020 cap resolution? A motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Free holders, after.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Leford.
Yes.
Director Lazaro.
Yes. A motion to suspend the closing of the hearing.
Second. Free holders, after.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Leford.
Yes.
Director Lazaro.
Yes.
Free holders, after.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Leford.
Yes.
Director Lazaro.
Yes.
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our pre-holders in the county of Passaic, for thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord and Master.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and as your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty, and justice for all.
In a moment of silence, please, for the men and women of God's most servant in the United States of America. And the first person that passed the burden travel for the current emergency.
Free holders, after.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Leford.
Yes.
Director Lazaro.
Yes. A motion to suspend the regular order of business.
Move it. Okay.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Leford.
Yes.
Director Lazaro.
Yes. A motion to suspend the regular order of business.
Move it. Okay.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Leford.
Yes.
Director Lazaro.
Yes. A motion to suspend the regular order of business.
Move it. Okay.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Leford.
Yes.
Director Lazaro.
Yes. A motion to suspend the regular order of business.
Move it. Okay.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Leford.
Yes.
Director Lazaro.
Yes.
Free holders, after.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Leford.
Yes.
Director Lazaro.
Yes.
Free holders, after.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Leford.
Yes.
Director Lazaro.
Yes. A motion to suspend the regular order of business.
Move it. Okay.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Leford.
Yes.
Director Lazaro.
Yes. A motion to suspend the regular order of business.
Move it. Okay.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Leford.
Yes.
Director Lazaro.
Yes. A motion to suspend the regular order of business.
Move it. Okay.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Leford.
Yes.
Director Lazaro.
Yes. A motion to suspend the regular order of business.
Move it. Okay. Free holders, after.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director Leford.
Yes.
Director Lazaro.
Yes. A motion to suspend the regular order of business.
Move it. Okay. Free holders, after. Okay.
Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it. Okay.
Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Move it.
Okay. Does it matter? No, I'm not worried. No, I'm not. Where you go.
So, so basically, the amendment, um, we have thirteen grants that we're adding to the budget. Um, we're increasing the revenue side of the budget as well as the probation side of the grant. The total of the grants amounts is about a five point one million dollars. Um, and that is, did you mention?
Roll call. Five point one million. Roll call for number eight. Um, preholders, after.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director LaFleur.
Yes.
Director Lazar.
Yes. Do you have a motion to adopt the twenty twenty state county budget as amended?
Move it. Move it. Okay. Preholders, after.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director LaFleur.
Yes.
Director Lazar.
Yes. Do you have a motion to adopt the twenty twenty state county budget as amended?
Move it. Move it. Okay. Preholders, after.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director LaFleur.
Yes.
Director Lazar.
Yes. Do you have a motion to suspend the regular order of business?
Make that motion. Second. Preholders, after.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Deputy Director LaFleur.
Yes.
Director Lazar.
Yes. Preholders, of course. I'm gonna, uh, pass on this one right now that the preholders have, uh, so I will pass on that back and we'll start with three.
Uh, thank you, Director. I just want to take this opportunity to, uh, thank everyone involved in, uh, our twenty twenty budget, which was the second time in, uh, the third time in four years, uh, to use bill tax increase, completely accomplished without, uh, the buy-in, stakeholders associated with the budget, now the professional administration under, like, administrator in Nova, Department Nets, who played, played a critical role in keeping costs down and, um, enabled us to present a budget of my taxes, which, uh, and some of my colleagues and board of supporters supported, uh, in this budget, uh, college, everyone's, uh, involvement in it.
Thank you. Um, do you have a question? [inaudible].
Oh, um, I just wanted to thank, uh, James for, uh, taking the lead on our, uh, coronavirus preparedness, having, uh, all with Dr. Gunhill, uh, of the, of the, Dr. Gunhill, uh, it's been a privilege at both tasks, federal level, state level, uh, county level to, to, uh, how best to, uh, you wouldn't say, uh, it's uncharted territory, uh, but, uh, uh, we could, uh, Jason, too.
Uh, do you have a question?
Thank you. I want to wish an early happy birthday to Lou Dimhoff. Lou and I share a birthday this Thursday. But, that's not the most important thing about March twelfth. Maybe losing. I don't think it is, because March twelfth is the first day that you might receive in your mailbox, your letter from the United States Census Bureau. You need the opportunity to respond to the twenty twenty census. If, uh, any of you sees me on social media, you know how important a complete count is. The more people we count, the more money we get in federal funding, the more representation we get in Washington and in Trenton. Um, we have a great team with our Passaic County Complete Count Committee, with the staff and folks that are working with them. Uh, in the weeks ahead, you're going to see more and more of that information being pushed out. Please share it with your friends and your neighbors. If you're interested in becoming a Passaic County Census Ambassador and earning a stipend to help spread the word about your, about the U.S. Census and the community we touch, we need people from Passaic to West Milford. We need people to speak all the languages and know all the neighborhoods of our county. Be part of that. Find out how to at PassaicCountyNJ.org/sensus or by emailing census@PassaicCountyNJ.org. And we are aiming for a complete count. I appreciate the support of this board in making sure we get one this year, uh, because that will give us a chance, uh, having your great work on the budget to do even more in the decade ahead, with community resources, bringing in by compliment. So, keep an eye out for your census and respond for everybody in your household, not just citizens, not just folks doing particular rates, everybody alive on April first gets counted.
Do you have a question? Duffy?
Preholders, Duffy. I just wanted to commend, uh, preholders, like, and, uh, the rest of our staff, uh, Board of Health, Director Lyons, I sat in a meeting, uh, and it was, uh, quite impressive. Um, we have a handle on it, um, you know what we, you know, we're looking at, but at least, you know, we're not, uh, it's, it's scary with that, but, but it's nice and, like, uh, doctors to doctors, and that's, uh, we're watching, and I've got, and I've got a bone.
I do want to thank our county administrator and Bob Lyons, who is our coordinator, and Dr. Gungel, who has been absolutely amazing. Everybody who participated Monday led me to believe because of what they, of the presentations, that we are fairly well positioned to handle what we need to handle. That doesn't mean we know everything. This is a novel virus, so we are on uncharted territory dealing with it. But I'm very confident after that first meeting, there's another one next Monday. I'm very confident that the professionals who are dealing with this for us are doing it correctly and for the benefit of the citizens of this county, to the best that we can do in protecting people, I think that our staff and our departments are doing just that. Unless anybody objects, if you would like to give an update, unless you're on here somewhere, you may not want to, but I don't want to put you on the spot if it's compromising what you're doing right now, then don't give an update.
While we wait, Dr. Gungel, first I'd like to say she has been fantastic, and the people of the State of County are very fortunate that we have Dr. Don Gill, whose education is anthropology, so it's very fortunate that we have her here. She has been working a lot of hours. I was calling her 10:30 last night over an issue. She has been in constant communication with all of our health officers throughout the county and the state. To start beginning today, the government offices are having daily conference calls at 10:30 with all of the county administrators. And one of the themes on the call was how other counties are struggling to communicate between their health departments and the county health department. And I was fortunate enough to be able to say that we have not had that issue in the State of County, that the relationship with the county and the health officers. And there's going to be a call later on with the Department of Health or the Health Office throughout the state, suggesting that they urge municipal health officers to keep the county involved. Because again, communication here is key. The more we know, the more the residents know, I think the better. We all think calm is kind of the word today. We all have a little bit of anxiety over this, but we need to try to stay calm. We need to try to do the right things. So the one thing that I will mention on the call today, Dr. Gungel, I'll steal something from your thunder that here in the State of County, that I guess we have had two cases that are presently under investigation, two cases that were tested that came back negative, and we've got one positive resident, so we're putting it in the best possible way.
Correct. Yes. So we do have one State County resident who tested positive for COVID-19.
Dr. Gungel, I don't know if you heard of where the microphone did not work as well, so if you could just...
So I can use my Professor voice?
Really loud voice for people.
So good evening, everyone. The State County has received one presumptive positive case of COVID-19. Presumptive positive means that it was tested positive by the State of New Jersey Public Health Lab, and it is awaiting confirmation from the CDC lab. I believe all the cases in New Jersey are presumptive positive at this time. There are two other persons under investigation, which means that they have been tested, but we are awaiting results. The health officers and I have all been having weekly conference calls to discuss and update each other on the status of each municipality. We share resources, we share ideas, we explain what's going on, because there is a lot that is not known, is not in the media, is not out there. So it's very important for us in our response to this novel virus that we understand how we can better serve our communities. We have been updating our website, as a matter of fact, I believe yesterday or today, we updated the state, the county website. The state website has a ton of information, and I encourage you, I invite you to take a look at that as well. And also to use the state 24/7 hotline, which is 1-800-222-1222 for all of your questions. And I believe that, and of course, the CDC website. The CDC website has information for almost any instant, any situation that you're in, whether you are in university, in the workplace, you're a healthcare worker, they have looked at almost every single thing you can think of, and have created guidelines for those situations. Again, because it is novel, it means we don't know a lot about it, so we're learning as we go. But what we do know about viruses in general still works. So we're in the middle of flu season still. We advise that people wash their hands regularly, and if you cannot get it for at least 20 seconds, so we usually say sing the Happy Birthday song and wash while you're singing it. And when you're done singing it, you will have wash your hands for about 20 plus seconds. Secondly, we ask you to not touch your face. The reason for that is that we transmit viruses and bacteria to our mucous membranes, our mouths, our nose, our eyes. And so if we do not touch our face, we reduce the chances of spreading diseases to ourselves. Thirdly, we ask that if you feel sick, you exclude yourself from work or from school. And lastly, we ask that if you cough, you cough into your elbow, or you cough in a napkin and you discard it, and then you wash your hands. Those are common sense hygiene things that we all should have been doing anyway, but now because we are faced with this new disease, we have to be extremely careful. Finally, if you are, or if you are around, older adults seem to be more at risk for having more severe symptoms than younger people. So we are advising older adults to be extremely careful, and for people who are around older adults, to help them to exclude themselves, to help as much as they can, because if they get sick, they can become very sick. Those are the ones that we're most concerned about. Not that we're not concerned about everyone, but for most of us, we're going to be sick. About 80% of the people are going to have mild symptoms. If you are older, you can get very, very sick, and we're concerned about that. And I think lastly, I should say, because I have one thing, what the symptoms are, and they are fever of 100.4 and higher, a cough, sometimes a runny nose, a sore throat. Those are the main symptoms that we see with this particular virus. Does anybody have a question? All right, thanks. And you know, try to go to the websites, they're really very good resources. I know it's a lot, so take your time, look at one link at a time, and really try to digest it, because it is a lot. But again, common sense prevails. Thank you.
And three elders, if I also, we have stopped this station at Freakness Health Care Center, which is our long-term care facility, we have over 350 residents at Freakness. Their activity level is very high, they are very high-risk patients. So we have had a lot of cooperation with family members, there are some family members that obviously are disturbed by not being able to visit their loved ones. They have set up that they can Skype or FaceTime their families, but you may get some phone calls of disgruntled families. But I will say that I will live by that decision, that we are erring on the side of caution, and I am certain that nobody wants their loved one to be infected by someone who's in that facility. So I know it is difficult, and I'm sure if I had a loved one there, I'd be anxious that I wouldn't see them, but I do believe it's the right of law. We have also tried to do the same thing with the jail. We have video visitation, trying to curb lawyers from having to see their clients face to face, allowing them to do video conferencing as well. So the areas where we can try to use good common sense, and I think that was the theme Monday at the meeting, and this is the time for all of us to use good common sense and try to adjust our lives accordingly, right? So if you're not feeling well, stay home. If you don't need to be in a big crowd, don't, and wash your hands. You don't necessarily have to sing out loud. So they want you, but others, but seriously, use common sense. By the way, you can go inside, wash your hands. Go break, seriously. Thank you, Dr. Gungel.
Okay, have a motion to open the public portion of the meeting.
Three elders, Octor. Yes. Bartley. Yes. Pass. Yes. Dumpy. Yes. James. Deppy. Director LaFleur. Yes. Director Lizar.
Yes. Anyone wish to be heard, please come up to the podium, you're going to have to talk around the microphone, it's not working. But you do have three minutes, if you think you can address it.
Well, I don't know if they can hear, so we can hear you better from here. We can hear you better from here.
My name is Carol Nigich. I live at Two Granite Roads, Woodland Park. I am also a member of Seniors for the Democratic Society, and it is no coincidence that I'm here tonight to address the issue of voting. Like many proud residents of State County, I'm concerned about the security of our elections, and specifically the accuracy and dependability of our voting machines. New Jersey is one of only five states that rely entirely on paperless voting machines. We believe that the only way to guarantee voting accuracy and security is with hand-marked paper ballots, and as we know, not all paper ballots are the same. Will your procurement process for new voting machines be open and transparent? Thank you.
What was asked after everyone else?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carolyn Gretchen. I live in Woodland Park, and I'm also a member of the Seniors for the Democratic Society. Some of you are too young to remember the other senior. We were talking about voting machines, and in New Jersey, there were 11,000 purchases between 2004 and 2007. The life of those to play a voting machine is about 10 years, so you're overdue. As we're overdue, a lot of them are failing down, and you can't get parts because they're too old, and your dad is too old for them. They also use outdated software and hardware, so they're very susceptible to being inactive, and we're also very susceptible to being hacked. My friend mentioned paperless spouse, and something you and other people have had to discuss. I wanted to know, in the superintendent of elections, does she have technical advisors to help her? Am I a technical advisor, do you know?
Who would you say that we answer questions, actually?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And in terms of director, Sandy Lozada, I love the way you opened the meeting, letting me talk about how hard it is, how hard I want to vote, and so, and you all went through elections. You know what it's like, right? So we want to make sure that the votes of the people supporting you get recorded, and we want to make sure the votes are recorded. We really love you, and thank you. So thank you for your time. I was in a luxury country tonight, with all the people voting, and so proud to be here. Thank you for all you do.
Hello. I'm Kitty Derrick, five Powell Street, living in New Jersey, and also a member of SBS, Seniors for the Democratic Society. Holding place optical scanners that count hand-marked paper ballots are the best way to make sure all votes are counted accurately. A paper ballot that a voter touched, filled in, and personally scanned into a voting machine is the most accurate and reliable ballot because it best represents the voter's intent. Precinct-based optical scanners are easy to use. A voter personally feeds into the voting machine a ballot, he or she has filled out by hand. The process takes seconds. In New Jersey, in the event of a recount, the paper ballot is used as the official ballot. Therefore, it is critical for the paper ballot to reflect every voter's true intent. The best voting machines are optical scanners that count ballots separately, voter-handmarked. These ballots must be counted at the precinct level, so paper ballots are not tampered with while being moved to another voting machine to be counted. Precinct-based optical scanners that hand-count paper ballots are also more cost-effective than other types of voting machines because they can process votes very quickly. These types of voting machines are used effectively in many states, including New York. In the event of a machine breakdown, voters can still cast their hand-marked paper ballots. These ballots are treated as valid emergency ballots. Dominion Image Cast precinct machines are hand-marked paper ballots that are placed in holding-place optical scanning machines. Not all paper ballots are the same.
Hello. I am Freda Lee. I live in Woodland Park, New Jersey. I'm also a member, I'm staffed a member of SBS, not the original term, Seniors for the Democratic Society.
Excuse me, make that clear.
Yes. We are children of 60s. So first, I want to commend the board of three holders for passing a budget that did not increase taxes on State County residents. That's a great thing. But I do want to talk about funding for the voting machines that we're all talking about. So there are two machines that seem to be considered by most of the county from New Jersey. There's the ESNS Express Vote XL. It is subject to security issues, problems, miscounted votes, and the other one is the Dominion Image Cast precinct system, which the voters fill out an optical ballot, and then put it into an optical scan machine. Then the ballot gets packed in a lock box, a secure box, so it's available for a recount if necessary. In terms of the funding, Millssex County is paying 7.6 million for the ESNS Express Vote XL, while Essex County, which only has about 4,000 fewer registered voters, is only paying 3.8 million for the Dominion Dominion Image Cast precinct. This year, Congress has allocated New Jersey over 30 million in Health and Earth of Vote Act funds, HOB Act funds, with almost $11 million coming from the federal government and just over $2 million coming from the state. So has the State Counties applied to any of these funds, and if not, when do you expect to do so? I believe the smartest, most cost-effective use of these funds would be to purchase a Dominion Image Cast precinct, which uses that hand-marked paper ballots along with a polling-place optical scanner. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Elizabeth Franklin, and I am living in beautiful Woodland Park, and I also am a member of SBS. And I'm also a coworker, take that very seriously, and I hear it is important that machines we're using are way too old, they need to be replaced. They break down easily, they're very difficult to set up and to break down in just about every election day. They also depend on manufacturers for programming and software that do not provide verifiable accuracy. The ability we participate in our democratic political process is a very personal and important act, myself, to voters of the State County, and to the citizens of our country. Voters deserve accuracy and transparency in our voting and health. The first reason I'm here is saying that hand-marked paper ballots for the optical scanning machine will be the safest and most accurate choice for the State County's new election.
I'm Oliver Carrack, and a resident of Little Falls, New Jersey. And for the record, I have not, or never been, or presently a member of SBS. I am here as a representative of Blue Wave. So the premise of, and also let me thank you, President Wollin, for talking about the Hudson strike in 1913, and the hardship that the civil war went through, and that it led the way, as you pointed out, to the 30-hour, you know, eight-hour workday, and, you know, pay-able somewhat, so really looking for a goal that was unsuccessful at the time, and if I want not, I would talk about the children who were sent to Little, other families, I would have to, as an aspect, that some 600 children of Strikers, who couldn't afford to feed their kids, were sent to Little Families in the York County area. But I'm guessing I need to talk about the voting machine, and the premise of my statement is that not all paper ballots are equal. In an attempt to adapt the convenience and accessibility of electronic voting machines to most secure and reliable paper ballots, ballot marking devices have voters use touch screens to make their selections. Once they finish recording their votes, the machine prints out a ballot with their choices printed for them. They then take the ballot and they put it in, or they have to stand it to a ballot box. There was a recent study by the University of Michigan that concluded that voters don't pay enough attention to the election security safeguards at disposal. The study found that voters miss 93% of errors on printed ballots that they filled out using electronic ballot marking devices. The University of Michigan strongly recommended that additional research is necessary before it can conclude that any combination of procedures achieves hard verification performances in real elections. Furthermore, the study recommended until ballot marking devices are shown to be verifiable during real-world use, the safest course of security is the use of hand-marked paper ballots. The study recommendations supports the argument that we should not buy, for instance, the ESNS Express Voting Machine or any other ballot marking device. Therefore, I am in support of hand-marked paper ballot systems with political place of optical scanning that count the ballots, just to ensure that the state county voters will be confident that the vote is actually counted accurately. So, thank you for your attention, Chris Hader. Thank you.
Hi, this is Elizabeth Franklin, and I'm a resident of the State County, and I'm always a member of the Seniors for the Democratic Society, knowing as SBS. I'm a member of the Black House, and I thought to talk about voting machines, and I want to tell you how this, the procedures were written in 1930, really to save, you know, very good faith. And when these states were done, some were not helpful and not outdated. Voting machines are highly issued and clearly experts. And thirdly, while it has a large number of new, captain Boris, and they give experts. New Jersey voting system are not anymore. The police system is very, very, very software, they operate against voting. But State County, we need to step up and move so that they can consult experts. I hope there will be new voters who will open the voting security. There is a national perspective election machine expert, computer scientist, professor Andrew Pimple of Princeton University, who is willing to testify all election security to the voters, and is willing to vote elections. I hope that this will be worked by these experts. And I also want to make sure that I'm a member of the hand-marked, hand-marked system of voting machines and for scanners, so the voters of the State County will be, we have increased confidence and therefore to actually vote.
Good evening. I'm Joyce Drummer of Little Falls, and I'm here as a member of Blue Wave. I want to tell you I'm very, very worried about election security. Hatties should not purchase the ESNS Express Vote XL. If either the SAFE Act or PAID Act become law, Express Vote XL machines will become obsolete, and millions of dollars would be wasted if each machine cost nearly $2,000. In June of 2019, Representative Lottren of California's 19th district introduced the Protecting America Federal Elections Act, or SAFE Act. The SAFE Act has currently passed the House of Representatives. It must be acted upon by the Senate before the current session of Congress ends in January 2021. The SAFE Act requires hand-marked paper ballot voting system, post-election risk-limiting audits. It bans the connection of voting and counting machines to the internet. Voting machines must be made in the U.S. Federal cybersecurity standards for voting machines and their vendors are required. Disbursement of $600 million to states to secure their election systems, and disbursement of $175 million every two years to states for election system maintenance. In May of 2019, Senator Wyden of Argen introduced the Protecting American Votes and Elections Act of 2019, otherwise known as PAID Act. The PAID Act would require that all states use voter-hand-marked paper ballots, conduct routine risk-limiting audits, allow the Department of Homeland Security to set minimum security standards for voting machines, databases containing voter registration information, and websites used to publish election results in federal elections. It also provides $500 million for states to purchase new ballot scanning devices, and $250 million for states to purchase new ballot marking devices for disabled voters. It will reimburse states for the cost of designing new paper ballots for performing risk-limiting audits. So if federal law mandates hand-marked paper ballots, the ESNS Express Vote XL will be obsolete. Again, therefore, it should not be purchased. Not all paper ballots are equal, and I am in support of hand-marked paper ballot system with polling-place optical scan counting. Thank you for your time.
Hi. My name is Robert Harrigan. I'm from Woodland Falls, New Jersey, and also with SBS, we're both there. Private companies are running our election at the ballot box. That is why we need to verify each vote with a hand-marked paper ballot. Since voting machines are computerized each before each election, software for ballots must be programmed into the voting computer. Programming computers for voting machines for elections, including loading the ballots, currently outsourced to private companies. Ballot programming by a third party opens our voting machines to several manipulations. New Jersey does not independently, does not independently test the software in its computerized voting machines, nor do the counties. New Jersey law does not require this testing. The state of New Jersey or its 21 counties do not have software source code. The program that operates our computers, we don't... we don't even have source code. The voting machines used in the state, the voting machines manufacturers consider the software to be a trade secret. That this means that New Jersey has no idea of what software is running its own voting machines. We don't know what's in it because we don't have source code. It's a trade secret. The source code, the program that operates computers used for the current voting machines is not all licensed to New Jersey. The state is unable to test the voting machine's security, and the state cannot assure the public of the integrity of the voting machine software. This means that the state does not know what the machine is doing when the ballot is scanned. Apparently, our votes are protected by a privately-owned company. Is that what we want? Thank you very much.
Hi. My name is Anna Rae. I live in Mississippi, New Jersey. And I'm also a member of SDS. And thank you for giving me this opportunity. I want to emphasize the small d in Seniors for a Democratic Society because our voting machines are non-artisan. It's really about protecting this democratic republic that runs our vote. The ESNS Express Vote XL is an expensive and flawed system. In neighboring Pennsylvania, Northampton County, this machine, a ballot marking device, had troubling results last November in the judicial race. One candidate, Aiden Piscis, a Democrat, had just 164 votes out of 55,000. Some individual machines reported zero ballots for him in accounting where it was possible to vote on a straight party ticket. This was a statistical impossibility. With clearly faulty results in at least the judicial election, officials counted the machine-printed paper ballots. This count came out to be a win for Aiden Piscis, 26,142 to 25,137. This was the work of the county's election officials. They had to make right that this county caused either by the machine itself or her leisure in the privacy booth. She is not holding up a line when she checks and rechecks her ballot. Compare that to the ESNS Express Vote XL ballot marking device. While the voter is making her selections and checking or not checking the printed ballot, other voters are waiting their turn at the machine. If there is a line, this encourages the voter to rush through and will likely not check the printed ballot. What is the process for securing new voting equipment at the Seton Counties? Can the voters participate in selecting the new voting equipment? And I ask that you hold a hearing on the security of our vote. A nationally-known voting security expert, computer scientist, Professor Andrew Appel of Princeton University, would be willing to explain voting machine security to the freeholders and the superintendent of elections at the Seton Counties. His expertise in computer science could benefit our county. Thanks so much for your time.
I think no one can speak to it. No, I think I can say. That's better. We're done. I think no one can go in and make public statements.
Freeholders' opter, yes. Bartlet, yes. Bass, yes. Duffy, yes. James, yes. Deputy Director LaFour, yes. Director Lazzare.
Yes.
First of all, all you're from SDS. I only read about the root of all in a history book, but thank you very much for being here. I know a lot of you. My name is John Bartlet. I'm a member of the Freeholder Board. I'm also a voting explorer. So this is something that's been important to me for a long time. I'm not going to try and respond comprehensively to all kind of you because there were a couple of questions I think I can answer at least in broad brush and hopefully continue to dialogue outside the context of the view. Carol asked if this is going to be an open and transparent process? Absolutely. We always try and have our processes here to be open and transparent. Carolyn asked whether or not we need to pretend to have technical advisors? I don't know if that is the title I would give to anyone on the staff in that office, but I know that both the superintendent of elections and our county clerk, Danielle M. Clark, are members of the Constitutional Officers Association of New Jersey, which has been a resource for Constitutional officers, the superintendents of elections, county clerks, and so forth, throughout the process of what we're doing right now, which is across the state, counties evaluating the choice to make with respect to new voting machines. I've gone down to Trenton with Shona MacPollock. You haven't seen both of their pictures here for the Southern Sisterhood. Both Shona MacPollock, our superintendent of elections, and Danielle M. Clark, our county clerk. I accompanied them to COA NJ event down in Trenton, where we tried out a variety of voting machines. Actually, and that goes to your question to the very end, which is whether to participate in the selection of our machines. That's exactly what we did both here in Community College and at Community College earlier this year. And I'm so glad that you and I think a couple, I recognize a couple of ladies here having been with us that day, where we had the Dominion Electronic Machine, the Dominion Hand... Dominion Optical Scan Machine, as well as the ESNS XL machines, all here for people to try out. We had a pre-intake survey. I went over that, actually, I checked out the lottery recently with Danielle and Shona. I went over some of those results. This is an ongoing dialogue among, not just the three of us working in kind of order and so forth. I share the priority, which we can see myself personally, elections that can rely on elections that are... that people rely on to give the results that reflect the will of the voters and that work in terms of the challenges of Election Day. That's not like somebody who's a homeworker and mentioning the challenge of machines breaking down. That's true. We currently have machines that we cannibalize for parts to keep the remaining machines running, as you might know. This is something we're working on. I spoke to a lot of you offline. My door is always open. We need the dialogue, the decisions that are made. And I'm really grateful to you.
Do you have a motion to close the double portion of the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. For our two-sentence agenda, Matt?
Freeholders' opter, yes. Bartlet, yes. Bass, yes. Duffy, yes. James, yes. Deputy Director LaFour, yes. Director Lazzare.
Yes. Do you have a motion to accept the agenda?
Freeholders' opter, yes. Bartlet, yes. Bass, yes. Duffy, yes. James, yes. Deputy Director LaFour, yes. Director Lazzare.
Yes. Do you have a motion to accept the agenda?
Freeholders' opter, yes. Bartlet, yes. Bass, yes. Duffy, yes. James, yes. Deputy Director LaFour, yes. Director Lazzare.
Yes. Do you have a motion to move the vote?
Freeholders' opter, yes. Bartlet, yes. Bass, yes. Duffy, yes. James, yes. Deputy Director LaFour, yes. Director Lazzare.
Yes.